Good evening, everybody. We have quite a full house tonight. It's really nice to see everybody here. I would like to welcome you to the Citrus Heights City Council meeting. And we are going to welcome Girl Scout Troop 310, who are going to lead us in the flag salute. So will you all please stand?
Color Guard, attention.
Audience, please rise, hand salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. And now, would you please bring the flags forward? Thank you, girls. All right.
Audience may be seated.
Color Guard, post colors.
Color Guard may be dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls and your leaders. We'll see them in a few more minutes on another item. So, thank you for leading us today. Next item, please.
Next item is roll call. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Present.
And Mayor Bruins.
Present.
Okay, next item.
Next item is video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Sunday, April 14th at 8:00 PM. And again on Monday, April 15th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. And a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. And, next item, please.
Approval of agenda.
Any questions on the agenda?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Before we go on to the next agenda item, I'd like to make a couple of special introductions tonight. We have with us three young men, who I'm very happy to see at the council meeting. First, I'd like to introduce Jorge and Miles. If you just briefly stand. They are explorers with our police department. And... And they are also interning with our police department. They are members of the Public Safety Pathways Program at Mesa Verde High School, which is a program that our police department developed and is doing in coordination with the school district to prepare young men and women who want to go into law enforcement. So, welcome tonight. Glad to have you. In addition to that, we have with us this evening Harrison Wilson. Would you please stand? Thank you. Harrison is here to get his merit badge in communications, and he's on his way to becoming an Eagle Scout. Welcome, Harrison. Okay. It's always good to see our next generation at a council meeting. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming the week of April 7th through 13th, 2019 as National Volunteer Week.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager with the Police Department. And next to me is Barbara Allen, who's the Volunteer Coordinator for the Police Department. And we're here this evening, not on behalf of the Police Department, but on behalf of all of you, to show our appreciation for Volunteer Week. In the audience today, we have quite a few of our volunteers that have been with us for many, many years, that work in all the departments in our city. And it's... I can't believe it's been a year since we were up here to say thank you and appreciate the work that you've done. So, tonight, we have, in addition to the Police Department volunteers, we have City Hall, Community Center, Planning Commission volunteers, Construction Board, Neighborhood Associations, and Reach, our business groups, ABBA, SMB, SMP, Sunrise Marketplace, the Antelope Crossing, Progressive Employment. We have the marching band. The service groups are Rotary, American Legion, Heart, Seroptimist, Lions Club, Kiwanis, and the Women's Club, as well as Animal Services and our library volunteers.
Volunteers contributed to approximately 16,169 hours with the Police Department. Community Center volunteers worked 37.5 hours a week during administrative duties, work in the senior center, and conductors of the center. City Hall has expanded the volunteer program and brought on 11 new volunteers last year. 20,681 hours were recorded and accumulated from the city, the community center, and the Police Department, which saved City Hall and the Police Department for a total of
And 14 cents.
Thank you.
So, we're going to do a proclamation this evening. The mayor is going to do that. But first, we're going to call up our volunteers by groups. And we're just going to have you come up here around the podium. And Mayor Bruins is going to come down and do a proclamation for you, and we're going to take a great prom photo. But, in the... The most important thing tonight is for all of us to show our appreciation for you. It's been my honor for 13 years to work beside all of you. I look forward to continue working with you. And whether you're working out in the community or in one of the city departments, you absolutely mean everything to us. You bring us joy. You work hard. We laugh together. We cry together. It's just an absolute honor to have spent another year working beside you. So, we're really looking forward to the next year. And I will say that I certainly am speaking on behalf of all of the city employees for all of the divisions and departments, that we all feel the same way. And you are very, very important to us. We can't give you a gift that is worth as much as you've given to us. So, thank you for that. So, with our work groups, we're going to get the City Hall volunteers up first. And I also want to introduce Haley Reed, who's the Volunteer Program Lead for the city volunteers. So, come on up, Haley. Yep, she's hiding in the back. And the city volunteers, come up to the podium. Darcy, she works the Community Center. Darcy Carpenter, if you want to come up. I think you're doing pictures tonight, so that's okay. And the volunteers for the Community Center, please come up. Don't be shy. Okay. Police Department volunteers, come on down. We have three pages. Citrus Heights Marching Band. Kathy, I saw you earlier. And whoever else from the marching band is here with you. Reach and the Neighborhood Associations, I know there's a group of you out here. Come on down and join the group. The Kiwanis, the Rotary, Seroptimist, the Women's Club, and the American Legion. And please let me know if I missed anybody, but I think I covered everybody that we were aware that is here tonight. And then Mayor Bruins. I'd like to walk you up to do the proclamation. If you guys want to kind of squish in just a little bit and pretend like you love each other, that would be perfect. Couple rows, yeah, down in the center.
Kind of back up a little bit, so the...
This is just amazing. You are a beautiful group of people. We love you so much. Thank you so much for all your work.
Well, we just emptied out our audience. You know, before I read this official proclamation, I have the opportunity to interact with a lot of you on a pretty regular basis. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the City Council, not only for saving us nearly a half a million dollars a year, but for just the quality of service that you give us day in and day out, your smiling faces, the service that you give to our public, our staff, and our city in general. I'm sorry, my back is to you. And so, these people are precious to us. And so, I think acknowledging you in this fashion once a year is just the very least that we can do. And so, I'm very honored to give you this proclamation. I'll just read a little bit of it. So, this is Volunteer Week. So, this, throughout all over the nation, volunteers are being recognized for the millions of hours of service they give to enrich our community. Our volunteers do connect our local community with the city on, with hands-on network of services. They make a big difference in Citrus Heights. And so, during this week, all over the nation, service projects are being formed, and volunteers are being recognized for their commitment to service. We had a really good example of this again on Saturday, where we had Arbor Day. We'll mention that again a little bit later. But we had volunteers from lots of different agencies, as well as families who just came out to plant trees in Van Maron Park. You give of yourself over and above what we all recognize and even know. And so, we just are so appreciative of you. So, we are just honored to acknowledge you this evening, and thank you for all the valuable contributions you make to our community. So, therefore, we do proclaim that it be resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does proclaim April 7th through 13th as National Volunteer Week. And we urge our citizens to volunteer in their respective communities, and we thank you. Give them a hand. So, we're going to do a photo op. I'm going to get in the back, because I don't want to.
On three, everybody jump.
One, two, three.
Perfect.
Thank you, everyone. And we have some nice gifts for the volunteer group. If you want to follow Haley out to the front, we have something that was handmade for you by one of our volunteers. Thank you all for your service. Yes.
And I'd also like to thank Barbara Allen for all the hard work that you put in to overseeing our volunteer program. Thank you, Barbara. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number five. A proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming the week of April 4th through 14th, 2019 as Creek Week.
And I've asked our news council member, Portia Middleton, to take the role on this. Portia?
Yes, sure.
And staff has also a brief presentation that they will give as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, council members. Stu Hodgkins, your city engineer, I would like to introduce to you officially, for the first time in front of council, Dirk Medema, who is our Associate Civil Engineer. He is basically our drainage guru for the city now. And he's going to speak to you a little bit about Creek Week activities and some history.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I would like to add a little side note. Been here about eight months. Came here from the city of Healsburg, known worldwide for a great place to be, a place to vacation. When I came here, I couldn't help but send notes back to them bragging about the volunteers that we have here, because I don't know of any other place that touches what we've got. It's a great group. Very commendable. As Stu mentioned, Dirk Medema, Associate Civil Engineer, primarily responsible for drainage in the stormwater program. I've been the city's representative at the Sacramento Area Creek Council Planning Committee. That's been planning the Creek Week for this week. We're in full swing. There were some third graders in Sacramento that did art projects, and the Creek Council hired a graphic artist to make a collage out of it. And so, the theme for this year's Creek Week is Watercolors Our World, based on the watercolors used in the design. In 2018, there were about 2,000 volunteers that participated in Creek Week at 90 different sites, and cleaned about 35 miles of creeks within Sacramento County, removing over 100,000 pounds of trash from the waterways. Put that in perspective, though, even within Citrus Heights, we've got about 30 miles of creeks ourselves. So, we're just touching what really needs to be cleaned. For 2019, Citrus Heights, again, is partnering with the Sunrise Rexon Park Department, or District, to do some cleanups at nine different sites. Carrie Hanson from Sunrise has been coordinating all the people for the event. Armando Velasquez comes in behind and coordinates the removal of the trash from the sites. So, Armando is from our General Services Department. And then, this year in particular, Regina Cave, who's the Operations Supervisor in GSD, has also arranged for a special 10th site in the city of Citrus Heights through the Sacramento County Chapter of the American Public Works Association. So, a lot of engineers and public works professionals will be coming to Citrus Heights to clean another site within the city. Weather should be great, if you want to come out and join the fun. There's a lot of really exciting things that are going on with the stormwater program. But Stu's going to yank me off to the side if I don't close. So, thank you for the opportunity to present Creek Week and what we've got going here in Sacramento County.
Thanks very much.
Yes, and we would like to invite Girl Scout Troop 310 forward to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, ladies, so much for all the work that you do in our community. Not only do you sell great Girl Scout cookies, but I've actually worked in the last several years with Creek Week. And when I was a young girl, I was a Girl Scout. And that means a lot, the dedication that you have, what you do in the community, means a lot to us. So, whereas the City of Citrus Heights recognizes the week of April 4th through 13th, 2019, is Creek Week in Sacramento County, presented by the Sacramento Area Creek Council with the theme of Watercolors Our World. Whereas volunteers, like you, will clean up Arden Arcade Creek and Cripple Creek at several sites in Citrus Heights. And whereas the Sacramento Area Creek Council, with the assistance of support of government agencies and businesses and other nonprofits, will attempt to educate the public on the aesthetic, recreational, ecological values of natural creeks and streams. Therefore, the City of Citrus Heights do proclaim April 4th through 13th, 2019, as Creek Week in Citrus Heights.
Let you get a picture? Okay, thank you, girls. So, while they're exiting, why don't we carry on with our agenda? Next item?
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay, well, so Brett, why don't we start with you?
Sure. No board update in the airboard, really. On a lighter note, a little while back, I had occasion to be driving down Greenback Lane after 9:00 PM, and needed to turn and go a different way when I came upon one of those intersections that still has one of those no U-turn from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, what I call relic signs from a time before. I'm wondering if we can take these signs down. They don't really serve a purpose anymore. I think their purpose in the past was to discourage cruising. And I don't really think we need council action, but if we do, we can come back with it, if other council members want to also. But I think what that causes, when we force people to make these turns, obviously, it's not necessary, for one thing. It also forces us to go into a neighborhood sometimes and make a U-turn of some kind. That's kind of dangerous. It forces us to go into shopping centers and create more unnecessary wear and tear in their shopping centers. And again, I think it's just lost its purpose. And if there is a purpose, I certainly would listen to that. But I don't really see any need to have no U-turn between 9:00 PM and 2:00 AM anymore in our city. I think it is left over, and I think, for the most part, it's probably ignored, too. But that's not good. But just something that I'd like us to think about doing and maybe changing. Mr. Miller?
Oh, I did have one removed, and that was the one at Sayonara, because the folks that lived in that mobile home park would not disobey the law. They'd drive all the way down to Woodmore Oaks to make their U-turn. So, I did have that one taken down.
And that's good, because if you needed to make your U-turn at Sunrise, and you decided, well, I'll just go down to Sun Hill, I think it is, right before Staples? There's one there. And if you'd gone down then to Sayonara, there'd be one there. And after a while, it'd be like, oh, good lord. So, again, I don't know if they're serving any more useful purpose. If they are, I'm certainly willing to listen to that. But I think that's just something that maybe has served its purpose and has done.
Why don't we make a note of that and follow up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And on a more serious note, I had occasion to take my beautiful two-year-old daughter to San Juan Park about a week ago, and we had a great time. And when I go to the park, I always try to look around the playground and make sure if there's anything bad. And we did that, and found nothing. And then, a couple of days ago, somebody posted on social media a picture of some very dangerous items, I think broken glass, some batteries, and syringes that they had found immediately at the park. While I was at the park, I did notice that a PD unit had gone back and forth numerous times. I was happy about that. I always like it when they're around. But I wondered why. And then, I also have to say that I observed what I would consider to be a couple of nefarious people at the park area, which kind of concerns me. But it's a park. It's open to everybody. But I'll tell you what, I'm tired of it. I'm sick of it. I'm done with it. I think we've tried to figure out how to be nice and stuff like that. And we have a strategic planning retreat coming up in a couple of weeks. And I would just like to ask my fellow council members to kind of keep that in mind, and city staff, about what can we do to maybe change this? Because it's happening often. I see these postings on social media often. We have lost the ability for people to go to the park and have a comfortable and peaceful setting, and we need to take a different approach. And so, I'm just going to ask folks to keep that in mind as we move forward towards our retreat, and maybe consider a more aggressive approach to what's going on in our parks. That's it.
Thank you. Jeff?
I'm sorry, not me. Okay.
I'm going out of order.
No, that's fine. I just... Yeah, not a lot on board updates. Did go to Secog, got back on the 4th. There's a kind of a leftover pool of funding from last year of $60 million. I did pass along that information to our engineering department to see if there's some maintenance of effort projects out there that we might do on some of our streets. Did have, on the 5th, the two-by-two of the Electric Greenway, as well as the schools' two-by-two. And then, also, on the 5th, which was Friday, San Juan High School and Mesa High School played in basketball. I don't know if it was the 4th or the 5th annual against the CHPD and Metro Fire. I want to thank Metro Fire for standing by on the sidelines with oxygen for maybe some of the older members of the team. But it was all good. The... I won't tell you the final score. The CHPD and Metro Fire did win. But then again, I'm not sure the high schools had all of their top players there either. So, I do have to throw that in. But it was a good time, and it was a fundraiser, so thanks for that. And then, the Finance Committee did meet, which will be coming forward next month regarding community sport and neighborhood improvement grants. So, that's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Portia?
So, League of Cities was the latter part of March. Mr. Slowey and I went, and it was a great time. I learned more about transportation and housing bills than I can possibly, you know, tell you about right now. But there's a lot of things that are changing, and we're going to keep updated on that and kind of watch and see where the city can fit in with all of those things. And also, on a happy note, I got to eat yogurt, because Heart threw a fundraiser at Minchie's, the newly opened yogurt shop. So, I got to take my kids over there, and we got to eat a lot of yogurt, probably more than we should have. We had to take some home in containers. And I also spent my past week getting to know our city a little bit better. So, I did a ride-along with the K-9 unit, and I also did a sit-along with our dispatchers. And wow, the people who work for our city do a tremendous job, and they're very great at it. And I'm very appreciative for all the hard work that you do. And that's it.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in March, on the 26th, attended the Old Auburn Road Complete Streets Open House. I saw both the Mayor and Vice Mayor there as well. Also went out for the Arbor Day festivities at Van Maron with Mayor Bruins, and planted over 160 oak trees. That was pretty impressive. I didn't plant any. My back was hurting, and so I wasn't doing any lifting that day. On Monday, at SAC RT, one of the major items, and it wasn't an action item, really, the TSA honored Sacramento Regional Transit with a Gold Standard Award for Transit Security and Emergency Preparedness. They scored a 98 out of 100, and that was like in the top 12 of the nation. So, very proud that we're making RT more safe, more secure. Unfortunately, when you get a 98, there's not much else. You can get a little better, but you can also slip, so we have to stay on our guard and keep that score up. Today was Sacramento Transportation Authority, and we had unmet transportation needs. This is the second round, and we'll wrap up on the third, where all the jurisdictions come and talk about their successes with the Mezuray money, and also their unmet transportation and road needs. And today, Citrus Heights was one of the presenters. Ms. Regina Cave did our update, did a great job. And that's it. That brings us to the President.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, I'll just wrap up. Some of the things have already been mentioned. I was invited to speak at the Neighborhood 11 Park Oaks. Great group of people there, and we had a good evening together. Did that a couple of weeks ago. And last week, I attended part of the Class of Leadership, Citrus Heights, and witnessed a great presentation about our Citrus Heights Water District, about the history of water in Citrus Heights. And then, also did a presentation on how they do project management. We have project management. That was very informative. And then, we did not have a sanitation board meeting since our last council meeting, but we did have a Sacramento Chapter of the League of California Cities meeting, and Jeff and I went to that and got educated on some of the redevelopment projects that they've done in West SAC. It's always interesting to see what other communities are doing in that regard. And then, today, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting. The city's representative there, and they spent quite a bit of time talking about their P-Bid renewal, which they have to renew their Business Improvement District every so many years. So, there's a lot of discussion on that. Our city manager, Chris Boyd, and our Economic Development Director, Megan... Huber, sorry. I lost your last name for a minute there. Thank you. Megan Huber also joined, and our city manager gave a presentation on some items of interest that they wanted to hear about, so that was all good. And then, their marketing committee did a presentation on the big event they're having on June 8th, which is called Brews, Brews in the Burbs, as in suburbs. And it's going to be from 4:00 to 8:00, and they have many breweries that have already signed up for this, and it's going to be quite a nice event. So, in fact, I think, in fact, I saw today, the Sentinel, they have, they're advertising in the Sentinel, our online newspaper steadily until the event. So, if you have a chance to sign up for that, that would be a good thing to do as well. So, that's kind of what's going on in the community, and that's it. Okay. So, next item, please.
Next item is public comment. And members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on... on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. And any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda. And the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, thank you. So I have three speaker sheets, but one is for item 15. So I'll hold that one until that item is, is heard. So our first speaker will be Mr. Kim Berry. Good evening.
Let's see. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First, Brett Daniels. I used to cruise Main Street in the late 70s as a teenager. And I remember when the signs went up, and I've had the same thought for the last two decades, that those signs need to come down. So, thank you. My name is again Kim Berry. For the last 18 years, I've lived just across the street in Stock Ranch Development. The last time I addressed you was in the old building, and I was speaking in favor of this new building. So you're welcome. Okay. Tonight, I wanted to raise concerns about the necessity of 5G in our residential neighborhoods. Currently, for our family at least, we can stream HD. We can do everything we need with the current internet. So we wonder why is, do we need 5G residential? Is anyone coming to this board and saying, you know, I wish I had a 5G 30 gigahertz transmitter 50 feet from my kid's bedroom? I don't think anyone's saying that. The trouble is, that's what's going to be coming our way. I don't think any residents are even having a problem with our current internet service. There's currently a dozen cities, including Los Angeles, Las Vegas, and Portland, that have filed a lawsuit challenging the FCC's limitation to local governments to regulate the land use of placing these 5G transmitters on, sorry, on telephone poles and, and light poles. So that's in the Ninth Circuit, case number 18-72883. Let's wait and see the outcome because the court may give more jurisdiction to have some control to keep these at least away from people's bedrooms. Just so you know, I'm not a crack, but I do have a college degree in electronics and computer science. But that doesn't give me really real insight to whether these are dangerous. It could be that these are in the milliwatt range, and they're safe. But I will say, I wouldn't let my kids walk up to a microwave oven and watch the food cook like this because proximity is a big factor at these high frequencies. So while I don't know the risks, I think the FCC doesn't know the risks either. There's a lot of studies on both sides of this that they're ignoring. And certainly, the paid industry representatives that are pitching it either don't know the risks or ignoring it. There have been studies in general, these very high frequencies, they can damage your eyes. They can affect your blood coagulation and your heart rate. There's even been studies showing that they can damage plants and foliage in the area. The city of Mill Valley had a similar issue. They received 150 emails on the topic. Only five people were in support of it. 145 were opposed to it or raised health concerns about it. So there is, the overwhelming majority at least have health concerns with this 5G. So I mean, at what point then does government, both at the federal level, the FCC, and at your level, to the extent that you really have no jurisdiction at this time, listen to the constituents and the concerns, and even justify the need for 100 times internet speed in our residential houses? So that's all I have this evening. I think 5G issue is not going away, so I may be back here at some point. Meanwhile, it gives you something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Arthur Ketterling.
Thank you, Council. I'm Arthur Ketterling. And I would like to mention that you mentioned about the U-turns of having the signs come down. I know it's been for a long time from 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM with the signs. But I believe that there shouldn't be, wherever there's any no U-turns, it should be none whatsoever. And a person should be able to get a big fat ticket if, if they don't abide that. Now, I know that, far as I know, there's not that many signs in Citrus Heights that has no U-turns. But the ones that do, and you believe that you need them, then have them. If not, get rid of it. But I believe, like, there is certain areas that needs the signs. And there's, there's times that, especially over on Greenback and Auburn, and Sunrise, when you make a left turn onto Arc, to go to Arcadia, where the buses meet, that sometimes you get in an accident. And there should be no U-turns, period, over there. And as I said, that use your judgment of what, of where, where you need it and where you don't. But please, if you do keep them, please have it be 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Okay. Something to look into. All right, that ends public comment at this time. So let's go on to the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar, item 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye. Aye. Can you oppose? Thank you. It carries. Next item.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 12. The subject is resolutions supporting the 2020 census. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the support of the 2020 census and affiliated outreach events in the city of Citrus Heights and state of California.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudas, representing the Planning Division, and your census team leader today for the city. I want to take a little bit of time to talk about the census before we get to the resolution. I have a captive audience, so I'm going to take advantage of it. As my shirt says, I count, you count, we all count. And that's the theme of the census. The census, as we know, will be April 1st of 2020. So we're just less than a year away from this big event. Just to remind everybody, this is mandated by the Constitution to occur every 10 years. It is our largest peacetime activity for the United States. And really, it determines our representation in government. And a couple notes, in 2010, California did not gain any representation due to the census, and that was the first time. And so concerns are if this census is not good, because I think the numbers of 2010, we feel were not very, wasn't a great census, that we actually could lose representation. So it's very important for California that we, the census be done accurately. And to remind people why the census is important, it determines the distribution of our federal funds. So funds that we receive from the federal government for healthcare, like Medicaid, Medicare. It determines where hospitals are located, and our schools and education. It's funding for childcare, our Head Start, our free lunch program, and Pell Grants. Housing programs, Section 8 vouchers, home funds, Housing Choice vouchers, and CDBG funds are all determined through the census. And then important, distribution of transportation funds are through, based upon census numbers. I looked at the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 1819, and the city had over $3 million in federal funds that were coming to us just this year, and all based upon census numbers. So it's very important. And theory is that every person that's missed on the census costs us about $2,000. So it's really important that we do count every person. And if numbers and dollars don't excite you about the census, and maybe you don't care about that, it's not on your radar, just a couple of quick notes. If you've done some ancestry research, you've all looked at census data, how they used to do it, handwritten. And so to show you, this is a census from 18 or 1910. And so it was all done by hand. And so it's very important, not only for what we just talked about, funding, but really for our future generations to determine the census and where we are at this time and place so future generations can know. Census data is private and personal until 72 years. So census data doesn't like this, that you're seeing here, doesn't release until it's 72 years old. So just about ready in 2022, I believe it is, that we're releasing the numbers from the 1950 census. So if you're doing ancestry research, that's important. There are some significant challenges for this census in 2020. It will be an online reporting. So typically, in the past, you'd have people come to your door, knock at your door, and obtain information. This, you're going to receive a card in the mail, and it's going to ask you to go online and respond. Some generations probably will accept that and do that without much thought. But I think that will be very challenging for some communities. That's going to be a very big hurdle. Reason for that is, you know, funding at the federal level to implement the census, the cost has just grown, so they're looking for this way. So partnership and outreach is going to be very important to provide people the security and the knowledge that when they receive these online, these, these cards, that they do go online and complete them. Of course, that brings security. You know, there's cybersecurity issues with that. The political climate is also a very, going to be a difficult challenge for the upcoming census. The citizenship question, we've all heard that in the news. That is still unresolved. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, that answer will be resolved, whether it will be on the census or not. They're kind of under a time crunch because if they don't get that resolved, then they don't have enough time to print the cards and the questionnaires. So people ask about that. I, my recommendation is really the numbers are what's important. And so if that question ends up on the census and you don't feel like answering it, just skip it. Really, we just want to know where you are, the time and the place where you are, and how many people. Elections, next year is a presidential election. So that'll also be a challenge. The diversity, Sacramento County in itself is the fourth most diverse county in the state, and that brings some hard-to-count communities and some challenges with the hard-to-count. Trust is always something important. Is my information going to be kept confidential? And then the housing crisis also is going to play a role. We have a lot of families sharing living quarters. Maybe they don't want to tell people they're living with somebody else, or they don't want to respond to the census because they're kind of living there under the radar. So though all those type of things will be a challenge. Over the past several months, I've been participating on a Complete Count Committee. It's a partnership between all the local jurisdictions, as well as some community outreach organizations, really to help get the word out about the census. Really want to count everybody once and in the right place. The hard-to-count is really a focus of the committee in kind of devising a work plan of how we'll reach people that may not have a stable living environment, that may not receive a card, but the efforts that will be made to reach those people so they do get counted where they're at. Working on developing the strategies with our partners in the education community, business, health, and labor. Sacramento County Office of Education has even developed a census part of their education that will be implemented in the middle school grades. So they'll have a quick session on the census. So when those children go home and they hear their parents talk about it, or they can talk about it and help kind of push that message upward that it's important that they respond. And we're going to be implementing this really with our partners and other local agencies in the county. And this collaboration is what will help make this a successful census. Ways to get involved, and this is where everybody would be very important, is you talk to people as you're out meeting with your constituents, especially if they're diverse groups that may be afraid or unsure of this, what the census is. You can direct them to these websites and these locations to learn more and how to get involved. It's partnering with those groups that will really make a difference, as they can help spread the words. They would be their trusted partner to the people that they serve. Employment, the census is really searching for census workers, and they really want them from our local area. The relationship that you have with the people where you live is very important in implementing the census. There's the website, if anyone's interested in census jobs. And they just don't need enumerators, and that's the door-to-door people. They do need office helpers. All kinds of different jobs are available, and they pay pretty well, like $16 to $22 an hour. It is a federal job, so there's a federal background check, which also kind of puts you in the hurdle for future federal jobs, because a lot of those steps would already be done. So reach out through that if anyone's interested in looking for work. Our local agencies, we've developed our own website to kind of help get the word out. And then the Sacramento Region Community Foundation is the community, or the Complete Count Committee leader. And they're our, the partner and is working really hard with all the different community groups to help share the word. So if someone is interested in getting their group involved, that would be the contact, Sacramento Region Community Foundation. See, I had a captive audience, so I got my spill in. And now to the, the whole reason that we're here is really just to show our support for the census and recognize our value and our dedication to it, and by adopting the resolution that was provided to you. I'm helping to answer any questions?
Do we have any questions from the council? Then I will entertain a motion for this resolution. So moved. And do we have a second?
Sure, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to issue the resolution in support of the importance of our 2020 census. All in favor say aye. Aye. Can you oppose? Thank you. Carries. And before I go on, I forgot to do something earlier, and I just want to do, do that right now. Citrus Heights was recently awarded Tree City USA designation, which, by the Arbor Day Foundation. And we, this was also honored at our Arbor Day event last Saturday. We, we planted all those trees. And it's, we love our trees in Citrus Heights. And we actually have more, more trees per capita than the city of Sacramento, which is known as the city of trees. So we have this beautiful plaque we will hang. And we also have a flag, which is too big for me to actually unfurl right now. So before I forget to do that, I did that little interlude before we go on to our next item. Thank you. Now we will do that. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 13. The subject is Electric Greenway Trail Project Approval of Contract Amendment Number Two. The recommendation is to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to the contract for professional services with GHD for the Electric Greenway Trail Project.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Leslie Blumquist, Senior Civil and Traffic Engineer with the General Services Department. Beside me is Casey Kempinar, Senior Planner. We're here tonight regarding the Electric Greenway Trail Project, which is a 2.9-mile multi-use trail that will go from Sunrise and Sayonara to Wachtel Way, following a smud transmission corridor and connecting seven parks to Woodside K through eight and the Sunrise Marketplace. Currently, we're working on the preliminary design, public engagement, and the environmental review phases of the project. The environmental review requires both CEQA, and because we have federal funds with the grant, also requires NEPA.
So NEPA is the, the federal version of CEQA. And Caltrans is the lead agency for that effort. So we recently met with Caltrans out on site to take a look at the conditions out there. And they requested a, a few additional studies to satisfy the NEPA requirements that were not originally anticipated under our scope of work with the consultant. Noise and air quality study, a natural environmental study, and analysis, analysis for park impacts. So because we had not anticipated those, it's hard to anticipate those to begin with. We try to give our best shot to figure out what they're going to request. But because we did not have that in our scope of work, we're requesting additional funding to enable us to do that work. And just kind of where we're at in the CEQA process, we're wrapping up the CEQA document in the next couple of weeks here, and we'll be taking it to council. We'll have a public outreach meeting here in the next month or so. And then we will be bringing the environmental document to council for their review and consideration.
So the item tonight is regarding the amendment with GHD. Staff is recommending that council approve the amendment for an amount of $17,607 to perform the additional studies as required by Caltrans.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one. So one question on, so Caltrans is asking for these additional studies. So this is a walking So this is a walking path and bike path, and they want a noise, and what was the other one?
Noise. There's a natural environmental study, which is a more advanced biological study, and then also park impacts.
Okay, because yeah, that goes, that's a rowdy crowd when they go out there walking down those paths. It just seems, I mean, we don't have a choice.
I think the noise, yeah, we're kind of at their mercy. The noise does have to do with construction noise, so that's.
All right.
I don't know of any soundless construction projects, so.
Move approval.
All right, thank you. Second, do we have a second?
Sure.
All right, thank you, Steve. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this resolution for the increased funding of $17,000 to comply with Caltrans's requirements. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Thank you for your staff report. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 14. The subject is Resolution Approving Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget. The recommendation is to approve a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 1819 budget.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services Department. And tonight, I'm here to present staff's recommendation on the mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2018-2019. So coming back, the actual budget was adopted on May 24, 2018, for a total city budget of just under $60 million. And that is the total budget comprising of the general fund, our enterprise fund, which is our solid waste fund, special revenue funds, and capital funds. The adopted fiscal year budget had a projection of revenues at just over $31 million, expenditures just under $31 million, and we were projecting an operating surplus of about $122,000. Tonight, we're going to focus just on the general fund aspect of our city budget. So as of yesterday, we had brought in of that anticipated $31.1 million, about 18 and a half, so we're just under 60%. And on our expenditures, just a little, just a little under 70%, which this is normal, because our majority of our revenue comes in through sales tax, and there's always about a two-month lag. So we would just anticipate that we'd be a little over 50% at this point. But after doing the review of the budget, and again, trying to true up those estimates that we made last spring to what's actually been coming to fruition for the budget year, we do have a few recommended adjustments for the general fund budget. So our first recommended adjustment is in the revenues, and due to some changes from what we had projected into what they actually were, we are anticipating the adjustments that you see on the screen, and that'll have a net revenue adjustment of just under $350,000 to the good. The expenditure adjustments that we're looking at are, again, we make estimates back in the springtime. What actually comes up with to the reality is what you see on the screen. We did have, I just want to bring your attention to the OPEB trust. So the funds were already designated in the general fund reserves, and so they showed up in our CAFR and our budget for last year. And what we're doing now is we're just moving them from the general fund reserves to the OPEB trust, so that's kind of a net neutral. It won't actually draw down what's available on the general fund reserves, because it's already being designated. And so based on the adjustments that we're recommending, there'll be about a net expenditure adjustment of an increase of just over $300,000. And so the net between the adjustments on the increase in revenue and increase in expenditure has an ending result of an additional $46,000 to the general fund reserves. So we had back in May projected that we would have an operating surplus of about 122. This will bring the projected surplus to just under 170 for the end of this fiscal And one of the recommendations that we had was moving, removing the transfer to the replacement fund as part of our adjustments mid-year. And so what we are recommending is that at the end of this fiscal year, when the audit is done, that we take anything that's in surplus over that 169,000 and now put it to the replacement fund. And just a reminder, the replacement fund is sort of the set aside to repair and replace unexpected and sometimes anticipated replacements of vehicles, replacements of equipment. We have the boiler go down in the police department, or the community center, or something happened at City Hall. These funds are dedicated where we have moved aside part of the anticipated replacement with each budget. And so what we would be recommending is that anything over the 169 be transferred to that replacement fund. And so the recommended action is to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. And are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions on this side?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, Brett?
Okay, I think it's clear, but I just want to be clear. So the 169, 127, you're not proposing anything for that. You're just saying anything over that that happens to come along in the next few months.
Correct.
This 169, 127, we can still decide to do something with if we decide to, or is it already dedicated to something else?
It's dedicated to go into the general fund reserve, so it just increases the reserve balance, correct?
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the revenue slide?
I'm sorry, the which one?
Revenue.
Go back.
Okay.
Oh, you want the expenditure?
No, I want the revenue.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, that's it, right. So explain the property transfer tax, since we don't get our property tax.
We do not get property tax, but we do get the transfer tax, a portion of the transfer tax. Whenever a property is sold.
Got it.
We get that.
Okay. That's that law that just went on the books a couple of years ago.
I think it was correct. And so we get a certain percentage, and what happened is Sacramento County implemented some sort of a new software, and there was an error. And so we, they actually had given us a double. We'd gotten twice what we had anticipated. So we had originally budgeted three, $675,000, and we actually had to give them $275,000 back. So we reduced it, and that's what this is accounted for.
So that's a one-time thing?
A one-time thing, correct.
And then the next expenditures? Question on the city attorney. Our material indicated that this was in large part due to the districting issue.
Just unanticipated legal expenses.
Right, in regard to that. So I'm surprised to see that, because we were anticipating, including the $30,000 payout, for that to top off at about $90,000. So my question is, is this an addition to the $90,000 that we're anticipating?
No, we did not have the $90,000 budgeted.
I know that's not budgeted, so is this part of, I mean, is this addressing that?
This will address that, yes.
Okay, so that's basically what that's for?
Yes.
In large part?
Yes.
In large part, okay. And then the risk management, is that just claims that have come in, or?
Because the city's self-insured for our workers' compensation, we project what the current year will have as far as claims cost based on prior history. So we try to predict the future with the past, and sometimes it doesn't always come true, and that's what's happened here.
Okay, got it. Thank you, that answers my question. All right, any other questions? Yes, Steve?
I just wanted you to explain OPEB. I think we all know what it means up here, but it may not be common to.
So it's the Other Post-Employment Retirement Benefits. So this is what we are mandated to contribute for retirees towards their health premium. It's not an enhanced benefit that the city provided, negotiated for, or really even agreed to. It's something that's imposed upon us because we participate in Calpers Health, so we have to pay a minimum contribution each month toward that retirees' health premium. And this is, we're funding each year the anticipated value to fund it this year to be able to pay for it in the future, so that we are not moving down into future generations of costs that's being incurred this year.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Then if we have no further questions, then let's take a look at this. We're looking at a resolution approving these amendments.
Move approval.
Do our budget, and we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 15. The subject is Police Use of Force Legislation: Support of Senate Bill 230 in Opposition of Assembly Bill 392. And there is resolutions for council's consideration opposing Assembly Bill 392 and supporting Senate Bill 230.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. You've got before you a staff report and two resolutions, both involving police use of force in California. One is AB 392, which I am recommending that the council take, approve a resolution opposing that position. And the second is Senate Bill 230, which I am recommending that city council support. I'd like to take them one at a time, just to avoid any confusion. So if it's okay, I'll start with Assembly Bill 392 and require or request that you oppose that one.
Okay, we do have one speaker sheet in this, so I want to make sure that this person gets a chance to speak before the council takes any action. So are you asking us to take individual action, one bill and then the other?
Yes.
So when would be a good time to call him forward? After you give your presentation, or?
That would probably be best.
Okay.
Thank you. So both of these resolutions are to send an important message to legislators on the position that this city council has on the issue of use of force currently being debated at the state capitol. And starting with Assembly Bill 392, it seeks to change and raise the legal standard codified by the United States Supreme Court in Graham versus Connor, which set a long-established, objectively reasonable standard on the use of force in the entire United States. However, AB 392 would undermine the U.S. Supreme Court standing decision by removing the objectively reasonable standard and requiring force be restricted to only that which was later deemed necessary after the fact. This introduces a dangerous hindsight judgment of police use of force. AB 392 creates an untenable circumstance whereby police officers would second-guess split-second decisions that are often life-saving reactions to safeguard the officer or the communities that they serve. AB 392 would make criminal and officer's use of force, if later deemed unnecessary, and makes the already dangerous job of a police officer much more dangerous and threatens the security of communities throughout California. In setting the current legal standard governing an officer's use of force, the U.S. Supreme Court stated that there must be an allowance for the fact that police officers are required to make split-second judgments in circumstances that are tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving about the amount of force that is necessary in a particular situation. AB 392 does not change any existing policies, guidelines, or training requirements. It simply hopes that using new language to define when officers are authorized to use force will result in sweeping behavioral changes in life-threatening situations. But officers do not think about rhetoric when they believe that they are faced with a life-or-death decision. They rely on their training. What AB 392 would do is criminalize the practice of law enforcement. It will deter officers from engaging in dangerous situations and leave communities less policed and less safe. There is no training component in AB 392. AB 392 simply makes it easier to prosecute police officers without providing the training they need to change. If, in the calm of months after an incident, anyone can think of anything the officer could have done differently based on AB 392's highly subjective standard, including allowing the escape of suspected felons, the officer's ability to claim justifiable right to self-defense vanishes. An officer could be criminalized for trying to do a very dangerous job, and it is my recommendation that council approve a resolution opposing Assembly Bill 392. Senate Bill 230, I am recommending that you support. Senate Bill 230 will set a national precedent by establishing the most comprehensive legislative solution on this issue of use of force. We believe, and have been, working with the Attorney General, legislators, community leaders, and many stakeholders from throughout the state to develop legislation that includes input from perspectives from across California. We've surveyed the most effective methods in training nationwide proven to reduce the use of force. Senate Bill 230 is an evidence-based approach that focuses on adopting nationally recognized best practices with proven results. Senate Bill 230 is the only legislation that will provide law enforcement officers with the tools and resources they need to reduce use of force effectively. What Senate Bill 230 does is establish the first statewide guidelines to clearly define when officers are authorized to use force. And let me clarify that just a minute. Police chiefs have a lot of autonomy in the policies that they write, and you may recall maybe 15 years ago or so that police pursuits were kind of the hot-topic issue of the day, and we didn't have a consistent policy statewide. And what we did then was police chiefs wrote a model policy through legislation, and now, as we sit here, California has standard pursuit, police pursuit policies, and we don't have that issue. You don't see that in the headlines anymore today, because their consistency throughout California. This is precisely what Senate Bill 230 will do with use of force. It will also require that every California law enforcement officer receive the most robust training in the nation, strictly designed to minimize the use of force. It will set specific policy requirements that officers de-escalate, render medical first aid, and only proportionally use force for that which they are facing. It sets forth detailed standardized requirements for reporting in all instances when force is used in our communities. It specifies that use of force policies and training are considered in legal proceedings, and it strengthens the California Penal Code's definition of justifiable homicide by police officers. In short, I recommend that city council approve or support the resolution in supporting Senate Bill 230.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, before we go to council questions, I'm going to invite David Warren up to speak.
Having wasted three and a half hours at the state assembly on Tuesday, listening to the testimony which occurred, unfortunately failed to, the audience failed to address the real issue, which is at hand, the definition of use of force. When I started practicing law, along with Fred Flintstone in my neighborhood, Miranda had just come down. I remember every police officer and deputy sheriff that showed up at the district attorney's office, because I was at the issue desk, said, "I'm never going to get a conviction anymore." That turned out to be pure hyperbole, because it changed the standard, but the convictions continued. I believe this resolution is premature. The member, Ms. Shirley Weber, was told by the committee chairman, chairperson, forgive me, that the bill needs to be amended. The training aspect that is missing in the assembly bill was specifically brought to her attention, and she said she was willing to accept amendments. The standard for use of force is going to be just as subjective in this new bill as it is in current law. Nothing's going to change, because police officers are involved in urban combat, the same way that soldiers in country have a split second to decide whether to kill the person in front of them or let them walk away. I can remember watching a person being careful not to shoot a civilian. Fortunately, a Marine made sure that that civilian was killed, because they were carrying a loaded hand grenade with a desire to kill American GIs. The situation is now that we should wait until the assembly bill clears the assembly floor. There are going to be dramatic and significant changes in the bill, and you may very well want to support the bill as it comes out of the assembly. There are changes, there were changes Tuesday afternoon, and there are changes as of today. The chief's presentation was correct if it was Monday afternoon, but those changes are now pending, and this city council should not jump into anything. There is no doubt that post-training has to be expanded to conclude mental health issues, issues of people who cannot speak. But you haven't considered the cost to the city of that increased post-training. We're going to have officers off-duty going to training, and we're going to be paying for the. and we're going to be paying for their time and overtime for other officers to cover them while those officers are unavailable for patrol. There is no doubt that every public safety officer, whether it be a fireperson or a police officer, needs to be protected. But right now, there's too much change going on. The bill is in too much limbo to take a position. I strongly suggest that this be postponed until after the assembly vote, because the bill as it appeared on Tuesday is not going to be the bill that goes to the assembly floor. And you may dearly regret your action tonight if you don't wait until you see the final bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So Chief, would you like to address that?
Yeah, the changes he's talking about is actually was made to Senate Bill 230. We made those, we made some amendments today. We worked with the ACLU and Assemblywoman Weber throughout the winter. This actually issue came up last summer, and there were no middle ground. There was no change to the bill, and it wasn't until the vote on Tuesday that now they're willing to maybe take a second look. This is a rapidly evolving situation. These bills can move to the assembly floor or the senate floor very quickly. This particularly bill, Assembly Bill 392, got moved to the Rules Committee rather than to the assembly floor, which is good news, because it forces them to start looking at some changes. Absent that move to the Rules Committee, I don't think they would have. I think it would have moved to the assembly floor, which is why it's important that we take a stance on the bill as it's written today.
Okay, so just one thing we could do is take our position based on the bill as it is written today. That would be acceptable.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
I have some questions, but comments.
Okay, just a second.
So I actually attended the Assembly Bill hearing, and I was there when they voted and moved all that through committee. And I saw from Friday night, when I looked at the bill, to Tuesday, when we actually went to the hearing. You had a thick packet, and there were many things that were changed. The checklist was no longer there. They further expanded upon about what they meant by necessary, what they meant by the whole 2020 thing, you know, the idea of making a determinate, officer making a determination based upon the evidence they had right there in front of them and clarifying that that did not mean hindsight. It meant what the officer knew at that time. And further clarifying that even with all that, if the bill were to move forward, that it would still be up to the local district attorney to make a determination whether officer is at fault. What I have not seen is with the Senate Bill, any of the updated things that you spoke about today. I checked, you know, Tuesday, I checked yesterday, I checked this morning, and there's nothing that has gone through that's been published, you know, for public view. So I can't say for certain that, I know that you tell me that, and I don't doubt that, but I would like to see that language written and see that bill analysis before we even move forward. It's just, it's not fair to say, "I'm choosing this apple over this orange," because we don't know. We might be able to take a blend of the two. And so I just wanted to double-check and make sure that there's not a Senate Bill that's out there for public consumption that I just happened to miss.
I have the language in front of me. The press release went out at 11:30 this morning with the changes, so it wasn't public until this morning. The changes you're talking about to the Assembly Bill have not really been codified. The State Assembly Bill has been, and those are the ones that were released this morning. And in fact, the changes, the amendments made to the Senate Bill actually make it much more in negotiations with the ACLU, much more in that direction. So I think you'll find that the changes are actually very positive.
Okay. Steve? Jeff?
Questions? No, but I do have comments.
Do you have any questions?
Questions? Yeah, I do. So, in a nutshell, would you say it is correct that AB 392 changes the use of force standard from reasonable to necessary?
That's what the bill's intent is to do, yes.
And if an officer in the field comes upon somebody, let's say, and that person is holding some sort of club object and appears to be advancing towards the officer, and the officer felt that that object could cause serious injury or death to him, but that object ended up being fake, would it be necessary for the officer to take some sort of force that could include deadly force, if that object was fake?
Well, I'm not sure I quite understand your question, but it would be reasonable in that scenario if the officer believed that they were under an imminent threat or in danger, that they could use appropriate force.
Certainly reasonable, but it might not be necessary, because they couldn't harm them with this fake club or whatever. Or let's say a plastic knife that appears very, very real and in close proximity to the officer. Again, the plastic knife is not going to harm, can't harm the officer. So would it be necessary for the officer to use deadly force in that situation?
A court could reasonably later determine that that was not necessary, as I understand.
And then again, the same way with the gun that might be unloaded or fake, that cannot shoot the officer, the person could not shoot the officer, it would seem it would not be necessary then for the officer to use deadly force in such a threat.
That would seem to be the confusion and subjectivity of this bill.
And then in all of those situations, there's really no way for the officer to make that determination within the split second that that officer may have to react to be able to protect themselves in such a situation. So in today's world, we understand that, and the law, as you mentioned, allows a reasonable response to such a thing, and the officer is able to protect himself. Correct?
Under the U.S. Supreme Court, yes, Graham versus Connor.
So taking that away from officers and their ability to protect themselves in a reasonable manner is going to subject them to a couple of different things. If they do respond, and it wasn't necessary based on those circumstances, they could find themselves in prison.
Theoretically.
Cities could find themselves sued.
That's correct.
And if they hesitate, and the weapon was not fake, they could find themselves in a grave. So whatever 392 is proposing to do, training-wise or beyond that, I'm not that concerned about at this point. I'm more concerned about the standard being changed from reasonable to necessary and what that means to our officers. Our officers mean a lot to us. We do not have a safe community if we do not have police officers. We expect our officers to go out and defend not only themselves but us. We ask them to put their life on the line for us. And so I think as a city and as a city council, the least we can do for our officers to show that we value that and we show that today, I think, and I hope, by opposing this Assembly Bill 392. And if it does change in some miraculous way, which I can't see how you can massage it out to change it in such a fashion, we can come back and do something different. But in the meantime, I'm hoping my council, this council will join me in opposing 392. That's it for now.
All right, so that's, Jeff, did you have some comments?
Comments, yeah. I wasn't, I was waiting for the question in that last dissertation. So, to me, the 392 is a very disingenuous bill. It is not about, I mean, in terms of verbiage, yes. It's changing the actual verbiage from reasonable and replacing it with necessary. And the reason is because the Supreme Court has cited the word reasonable in most of their decisions that side with the officer. Clearly, this is an attempt to lessen that standard so that, you know, regardless of what the district attorney does in a civil court, that police officers can lose. I mean, that, to me, is 100% of what this is about. Changing a word does not change behavior. I mean, we're very fortunate in Citrus Heights. We have a great police department. They're very professional, above-the-board. You know, is that true in every city, in every state? Probably not. There's, you know, bad apples out there. I think all of us will realize that. But we're very fortunate that we have the men and women within the department. And I've been doing this gig for 16 years. I go out four times a year on ride-alongs, so I've done 62 ride-alongs today. And I have to tell you, whether it was with the sheriffs before the CHPD or the CHPD, the job they do is not one that I would want to do personally or could do personally. I mean, they are interacting, for the most part, not with the most stellar citizens from Citrus Heights. It's a different crowd out there in the middle of the night. It's interesting to see, you know, when I drive down the street in the morning, what I know was out there 10 hours before that our police department had to deal with. So by just changing, or reasonable to necessary, you are not doing anything but setting this up for the trial attorneys to have a better chance to prosecute police officers and find them guilty. That's 100% what this is about, in my opinion. So I do support 392, you know. On the flip side, I'm going to support SB 230. Do I think that's a perfect bill? No. I think there's some changes, and it sounds, I haven't read the latest one. So, you know, it sounds like both sides are willing to talk, so I'm glad to hear that. But 392 is nothing but a smokescreen to get the trial lawyers the ability to sue not only jurisdictions but police officers and win, because under the current standard, again, they're making split decisions, you know, in the blink of an eye. And whether it's a cell phone, whether it's a, you know, fake knife, fake gun, when you're faced with that, you have to make that split decision. And I guarantee you, for anybody who's ever called 911 and wanted an officer to show up, you want them to get their A as quickly as they can and two, to protect you. You don't want them to second-guess and say, "You know, I don't really know if I want to go there. I got to figure out what's going on. It's a domestic situation, which are the most violent." And I don't care who you are, you know. When you call, you want them there and doing the right thing. And I do honestly believe this will not only put their lives in jeopardy, but could put our own if they're trying to second-guess what they're doing. So I will oppose 392, and again, I'll support SB 230. But on, from my end, it's not a perfect bill, so I hope a few changes are made on that. But it's a heck of a lot better than the other piece of garbage.
All right, any other comments?
I just want to say that I agree with the previous comments, and it's one of the reasons why I oppose 392 is just the subjective language that would, could potentially hold our officers criminally liable and increase the civil liability cases, both against jurisdictions and officers. I've always supported training and the best equipment possible. What occurs to me is, I really don't support either bill. I don't think either one's necessary. I think training is a part of what we do every day. I don't know that we have to codify that. But based, you know, faced with changing the language in 392 from reasonable to necessary, it just, it now has to be litigated all over again. And so rewriting this use of force is really just a political response to a tragic event, trying to solve problems by incorrectly diagnosing them and coming up with the wrong remedies. That's my opinion. So I will support SB 230 and just because of the fact that I oppose 392.
All right, thank you. Porsha, did you have some comments?
I have a few comments. I, I'm completely supportive of our police department. I raise my children to be respectful and to respect our officers and to use their manners. And that's not really something we have to worry about in Citrus Heights, and I understand that. Split-second decisions are inherent to police work, and we're talking about using the law to repair a broken trust in other communities, specifically that relationship between law enforcement and black and brown communities. And it's an uncomfortable truth, but it's not a truth that is here in Citrus Heights, per se. A lot of revision, as I have stated before, has been done with this bill, and more will happen on both sides. And I think it would be unwise and imprudent to support either the bills, because we have to ensure that we're protecting our community and protecting our officers at the same time. And these are the people who put their lives on the line every day to keep our loved ones safe. I, my husband comes home safely every day if we call the police, which we've had to do a couple times. They're there, they're courteous, they're supportive. I've done ride-alongs. I see the work you do. Like Jeff said, I wouldn't want to do it myself. It's terrifying. But I want to really emphasize that this is not an all-or-nothing, a Democrat or Republican issue. It's not partisan. We're talking about the lives of human beings on both sides, the people who serve our communities. And I will support the Senate Bill with the caveat that our chief of police uses his standing as the statewide, you know, president of the Chiefs Association to have open conversations on both sides of the aisle to ensure that our community and our officers achieve the best solution possible. This bill will change, and it's important to build bridges within our community. And we have to make sure that whatever we do going forward is going to be the best impact for the people that it's meant to serve.
Okay, thank you. Any bills? So just a few wrap-up. A lot of the comments that were made echo my feelings. One of the things I think is important about Senate Bill 230, I think the most important about it is the standardization throughout the state, so that an officer that goes from one jurisdiction to the next to serve doesn't have to relearn a local culture all over again. They know what the law says, and it says the same thing anywhere within the state. I think that's, for me, that's the most comprehensive reason to support Senate Bill 230. And Jeff said it as plainly as I could say it in regard to opposition of Assembly Bill 392. So that kind of summarizes my comments. And so I'd like to take each of these singly, and I would like to take a roll-call vote on each of the, of each of the bills. So the first one is a, I'm just going to read it and then I'm going to-
You're going to need a motion, aren't we?
Yeah, in just a second. So it's the resolution by the city council to oppose Assembly Bill 392 on police use of force legislation. So do I have a motion?
Move approval, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's take a roll-call vote, please.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Slowey?
Definite, yes.
Mayor Bruins?
Yes. So this is pass. We have unanimous decision to oppose Assembly Bill 392. The next, pardon me?
As written.
Yeah, as written, okay. And the next vote is a resolution of the city council to support Senate Bill 320 on, excuse me, I said it dyslexically, a Senate Bill 230 on police use of force legislation. So call for a motion, second. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to support Senate Bill 230, and I'll take a roll-call vote on that as well.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Slowey?
Yes.
Mayor Bruins?
Yes. I want to thank the council, and I want to thank the chief for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
And we'll go on to the next item, please.
The next item is Department Reports, number 16. The subject is the Citrus Heights Police Department Annual Report by the Police Department.
Well, on a much lighter note, I'm pleased to represent the Citrus Heights Police Department and present to you our 2018 annual report. And I've got with me here, I think, Dominic Cooper and Cassandra Burnett. Are you here? Just wave. So these two actually put this report together, and I want to thank them for all the hard work, the data and so forth that comes into these things is pretty amazing. So they collated this, and this really is their hard work. I won't read this page to you, though. This message from the chief is in there, because we put this report on our website. We're very transparent. We want to show the public what's in our report. But I do want to take this time just to take a moment to express that we take, once a year, and we do what's called our annual reviews, and we review every piece of our police department, every unit, every division, every specialty assignment, every ancillary assignment. And we have those units, those teams, tell us what they accomplished over the year, what they plan to accomplish in the following year, and what they need by way of support. That process takes over three whole days, 12-hour days, actually, three whole days to go through that process. So what I'm going to present to you tonight's an eight-minute presentation, and it barely scratches the surface of the complexity and the depth of your police department. So I'm just so proud of the men and women of our department. They really do a great job. So I'll start with crime, and we're still under the UCR statistics, which are divided by two sections, persons' crimes and property crimes. In the person crimes, you'll see in the left category there homicide, rape, robbery, and assault. Those are the four categories that are reported to the FBI every year by every agency in the United States. This slide shows a five-year comparison from 2014 through 2018, and the last- This slide shows a five-year comparison from 2014 through 2018, and the last two columns show the difference between 2017 and 2018. And you'll see there, at the total, there were 25 fewer person crimes in 2018 than there was in 2017, which was a 7 percent decline in persons' crimes. And then the bottom of that slide shows the five-year average in bar graphs, with 2018 being the light brown. Property crimes, this is another four categories reported to the FBI every year. They consist of burglary, larceny, which is theft, grand vehicle, I'm sorry, motor-vehicle theft, and arson. And of course, again, 2014 through 2018, and the two columns on the right show the 2017 through 2018 difference. We had 300 less property crimes in 2018 than we did the year prior, which was an 11 percent decrease, which is great news. You can see the bar graph there at the bottom of that slide. This slide pulls it all together. This shows our total crime rate for 2018 was down 10 percent in, over the year before. And if you look at that, which equates, by the way, to 325 less victims in our city last year than the year before. If you look at the pie chart, you'll see 62 percent of our crime is larceny or theft, and that is the lion's share of the crime in our city, followed by burglary, which was 14 percent, and motor-vehicle theft, which is 12 percent. So in essence, 88 percent of the volume of our crime is property crime-related, and that is, by and large, where we get most of our workload. But this is great news because the truth is, we're down 10 percent of the year before. This shows a 10-year snapshot. Now, we started in 2006 as a police department. That was a half year because we started in June, so that wasn't a full year of data. What's not here is 2007 and 2008 because we only wanted to show a decade, and because we're maturing, we're getting older, when we look at crime statistics going back further than 10 years, starts to become just more historical reference and not really relative to the crime data. But if you look at this, and if I were to show you 2008 and 2007, they would actually be higher than 2009 because in those first years as a police department, we really worked hard and brought down crime dramatically, in some cases as much as 33 percent. But if you look at this chart, from 2013 through 2018, we've kind of hit a flat line. And what this trend tells us is that barring any additional resources to the police department and presuming there's not going to be any impacts from the state on any wild police reforms moving forward than those we've already seen, this trend should relatively remain, if all things remain equal. But I will point out that 2018, and I'm proud to say this, if you'll notice, is the lowest crime year we've had as a police department, and that's a pretty banner year for us. So that's due to the hard work of our men and women of the police department, and I'm very proud of everything that they have done. This slide looks a little busy, but this demonstrates our traffic collision and a five-year comparison. And here's where we've got some work to do. The truth is, we were up, we had 20 additional collisions in 2018 over the year before, 12 in the injury category, which represented a 3 percent increase. So traffic enforcement, traffic education, traffic safety, and making sure we lower our collision rate is going to be a focus moving forward. We put in there our top three collision factors, just so that you knew what areas that were mostly causing the accidents. Number one, at the top of the list, was unsafe speed. Secondly, at 16 percent was improper turning, and third was DUI. And if you look at that bottom-left blue box, we put in there the red light violations because we have a very successful red light camera program, and it has demonstrated that we've reduced traffic collisions in intersections that have the red light cameras. They do work, they're very effective, and this shows that 8 percent of our collisions were from red lights, not necessarily at those intersections, that's citywide. But that's a good illustration of why those types of programs are successful. Moving away from crime and into just a snapshot of our department, I won't read all of this, but you'll see there in the top-left are sworn numbers, are 91 police officers, that includes myself, professional staffs, 51.25. And then we had a lot of hiring this year. Some of, most of those were all to fill, well, all of those were to fill vacancies created from either retirements or people leaving. The bottom one there is a fleet technician, and that is a new position that council authorized last year, and it allowed us to have a non-sworn person to manage the citywide fleet rather than a patrol sergeant, was a patrol sergeant before, and now this person has done a great job at helping us manage our fleet. The middle box there, the dark blue box, shows our promotions. Of course, we promoted our assistant police chief, Gina Anderson, who has done a tremendous job at helping me manage the police department in my absence with California Police Chiefs Association, so I want to thank her and our command staff for all of their hard work. Our commanders, we promoted two new ones, of course, two new lieutenants, two new sergeants, and a senior crime scene investigator. The light green box, this is kind of our unsung heroes, and we did have them come and we presented them to council some months back. But our property and evidence room is, it's one of those things that are in the background that you never see, you never hear about, but they're so critically important. And you see there that they analyzed 102 pieces of evidence last year. They received over 7,000 pieces of evidence or items, and then through the course of court processes being adjudicated, they went forward and destroyed over 10,000 items in that back room. So they do a lot of work, and there's only three people working back there, so they do quite a bit of work. And then on the far right, you'll see our training unit. We increased our training last year over the year before by 74 percent. So we believe very much in training at Citrus Heights. We believe that we have some of the best-trained police officers in California, and that is one of the reasons we're a great department.
That's an amazing statistic. 74 percent increase in one year?
Yeah. It was. It was part of it.
Was it focused on any one area in particular?
A lot of mandates, not any one area in particular, but we do have revolving mandates like driving. Use of force is one of those big areas. We do a lot of training in use of force, pursuit, driving, those types of things. So there's a lot of new laws that come down, and we have to make sure that our employees are fully aware of what's going on and the changes as well.
Okay, thank you.
This slide is specific to the patrol division, and you'll see there the top-left patrol incidents. We handled over 72,000 incidents last year. 52,500 of those were calls for service. That means over 52,000 times somebody picked up the phone and asked for help. 20,000 of those were proactive activities. That's a car stop, a pedestrian stop, something that we proactively went out and did to police the community. You see our citation numbers there, our traffic citations, and then our arrests, 2,600 arrests, over 1,000 of those were felonies, and about 1,600 were misdemeanors. And below that, I want to just point out that this is the first year we've called this out, but reactive arrests versus proactive arrests. And this is something that came to my awareness, frankly, in my involvement with Cal chiefs because there's a group called the Public Policy Institute of California, and they demonstrated, they're a nonpartisan think-tank in Sacramento and San Francisco. They demonstrated that since 1989 through 2016, that crime in California, or arrests, actual arrests in California have been reduced. It spiked in 1990 and then has been declining ever since then. But they broke it down, their arrest rates by demographics, whether it was age, gender, race, and they just threw these stats out there. But there was, it was flawed information, and I had a lot of meetings with them about this because there's a distinct difference between a reactive arrest and a proactive arrest. A reactive arrest was where the police were called to conduct an investigation. It was domestic violence. It was a burglary. It was a robbery. It was somebody got their car stolen. And the police conducted an investigation. The evidence and witness statements lead them to believe that there's enough probable cause to make an arrest of a specific suspect. It's nondiscretionary. The evidence and the probable cause led us to that suspect. And you'll note there that there's far more of those types of arrests than there are proactive arrests. The proactive arrests, which would be a proactive car stop that led to some type of a crime. And those percentages, my guess, were kind of a microcosm of the state. My guess is that same type of trend would hold true in most cities. So by far, the types of arrests we make are investigative in nature, meaning that we got called to investigate a crime, and the evidence led us to whoever the perpetrator was. It's nondiscretionary type of arrest. And that's an important thing to point out when we talk about demographics and arrests. So our total activity in patrol, this includes animal control and code enforcement, was 92,074. The top right there, you'll see a mobile crisis support team. This is a mobile crisis advocate who rides with our police officers on patrol, and they go to people who are having a mental health crisis, and we have the advocate there to help us mitigate those situations. It's not a 24/7 program yet, although we'd love it to be. They handled 107 calls last year and did 53 follow-ups. The next box down in the, I'll call it salmon-colored, is our response times. And we're, I'm pleased to report that our response times decreased by four minutes, by 7 percent. Now, our priority-one calls, which are our 911 calls, those remain the same because we go to those as quickly as possible. But where this reduction was found was our priority-two, priority-three, and priority-four calls, those calls that can pend a little while longer because they're not in progress. But we were able to reduce those response times because of a patrol schedule change, and it was interesting to see that we were able to increase our customer service delivery by doing that. Last year, we introduced our felony bait program. We had 107 felony arrests last year. This year, there's a few less, 98 of those. But the great point to point out here is that 99 percent were filed successfully with the district attorney's office. So it's a great program. It continues to be a fantastic deterrent against crime in our city. Of course, we had 75 DUI checkpoints and saturation patrols in the city, and our domestic violence response team responded to 71 different types of incidents. Our investigation services, this is a very big division. Starting at the top-left, I'll point out that we have 30 explorers now, which is the most we've had since we've been a police department. That's very exciting to see. We've had 28 juveniles enrolled in our diversion program. Our task force there, the United States Postal Service, is the one that you've seen Farley, our canine dog. He and Officer Moran's are on that task force. And in the short time that they've been on that task force, they've had 229 seizures equating to $2,500,000 in asset forfeiture, which is pretty incredible. And not all of that's the city, it's the task force removing cash from the criminals, which is exactly what we want to do. And then our CalMet task force officer, and just one case, those numbers only reflect one case, by the way, 36,000 marijuana plants, 13 guns, and 16 arrests.
Wow.
So you can imagine the type of activity they've had all year long. The top right is our homeless navigator program. 136 individuals, or 39 percent of those contacted, and there was a total of 353 contacted. But 136 actually accessed housing, which is great news for us. They additionally had 53 ID vouchers issued, 32 attorney referrals, nine food staff assistance, and 21 government phone referrals. You see there are animal services statistics, 5,200 calls for service, 36 animal licenses issued, and 1,200 animal actions. And we're very proud to say that 53 percent of animals were not sheltered. And that's because our three animal control officers work very diligently at reuniting families with their lost pets. That's really our top priority. We don't have any interest in taking an animal to the shelter if we can avoid it. We want to make sure we can reunite them with their families as quickly as possible.
Question. Are we ever going to have another program where we offer chipping? We did that probably about six years ago.
Did it?
Huh?
Did it at Pettingilus?
Well, okay, well, I had the flu, so I didn't go to that. Okay. Okay, so at Pettingilus, they did chip, free chipping?
I'm told by Sergeant Evans, we just did that at Pettingilus a couple of weekends ago.
Yeah, right. Sorry I missed that event, I was down with the flu, so, okay, I'm glad to know that.
Yeah, and our shelter-
So generally, when we do it, we'll be at an event like that. Because we did it out at Sebar Sea Park about six, seven years ago, and it was big lines, people getting their pets chipped, so it's good to know.
That's a great program. We do have chip readers at the police department, so that's the first thing we check if we find, if we find them.
Okay.
It's a great program. Thank you for that. And pop in code enforcement, over 1,000 calls for service, 114 follow-up cases, and 788 code enforcement cases opened. Support services, you can see our dispatch calls for service, 57,000 911 calls, 118,000 calls, phone calls coming into our dispatch center. Councilwoman Middleton mentioned she did a sit-along the other night, or other morning, actually, it was early in the morning, and you saw the activity level in there. It's, our dispatchers do a phenomenal job, and there again, some of those unsung heroes that are not out there, but they're such a huge part of policing that we couldn't do our jobs without them. And what's really proud to point out here is that 97.8 percent of our calls were answered within 15 seconds, and that's above the standard that's set. So proud of our dispatchers for that. That's a great number to see there. We heard about our volunteers earlier tonight, and they accurately said that in the police department, they had 16,169 hours of dedicated service to the police department that equated to $434,461 in salary savings to our city. Pretty phenomenal. I look at what our volunteers do just at our front lobby at the police department, and it's just amazing because, I mean, let's face it, a lot of people that come to the front lobby of the police department are not always happy to be there, but they defuse them, they talk to them, they listen, and they're very empathetic to what's going on. It's kind of an art to what they do. I'm very, very proud of what I see up there. Our records unit processed over 10,000 cases and 2,000 of those to the district attorney's office. You might think, well, what are the other cases? Well, there's a lot of incident reports or a lot of cases that are not submitted to the DA for prosecution. And I mentioned the front lobby and the number of people that go in there. We started calculating how many people actually come to our front lobby, how busy are our record staff? We had over 14,000 people visit our police lobby in one year. Now, to put that in context, that's about the population of the city of Auburn, so it's a lot of people that come and visit there. And they handled over 20,000 business calls in records alone. Then our last slide here, this is just highlighting some of the great programs that we've initiated. So not only are we reducing crime, responding to traffic collisions and calls for service, but we've also taken the initiative to initiate some very creative programs. Of course, we created our assistant police chief position and had several reorganizations that occurred. We've created our very first Citrus Heights Police Foundation, which is a nonprofit that's dedicated to raising funds to help police families in need when there's trauma or emotional turmoil that we need to give them some help, like our peer support program. And they can also purchase equipment that the police department might need that might not otherwise be in our budget that we can't afford. Our dispatch center started taking text to 911 calls. Well, then our calls are texts. That's a new program that's started, so we're keeping up with technology and the times. Of course, we started our small unmanned aerial systems program. You've seen a presentation on that. That's been very successful. Our PAL Extreme Sports Camp last year in the summertime, our new canine, Farley. We added a new crime scene investigator, senior position, which is a quasi-supervisor position. We began our partnership with WE, Women Escaping a Violent Environment. We enhanced our youth and family services unit, and I'm very excited about our public safety pathway program. And of course, our mayor introduced two of our students that are here, that were here tonight. Those kids are pretty amazing. They are immersed in our police department right now. I think we have 11 at CHPD, and they're just so exciting to be a part of our team. And at first, they were a little nervous, and frankly, so was I. But over time, they've got to know us, and we've got to know them, and they're excited about, not necessarily always just being police officers, a few interested in being dispatchers, some are interested in CSI, and some of them may not even get into police. But it's just a great opportunity for us to show this young generation what policing's all about and be transparent about what we do. So very excited about that. Of course, we established the rental, housing inspection program, which is, we're now in the process of hiring that staff. We continued our traffic education campaign, and we started our mobile crisis support team as well as our parent project. And I'll take just a second to talk about the parent project. Our youth and family services unit started this class project, and what it does is offers parents tools and teens' tools to work on relationships and making sure that we're giving them the skills that they need to parent their kids. And it's not necessarily just at risk youth, it's for anybody who really wants help in parenting and getting some good tools. So that concludes our annual report. And I'll just finish by saying I'm so proud, again, of our police department. This isn't me, this is me getting out of the people's way and letting them do the great work, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all the men and women of our police department, sworn and non-sworn. Please pass that along.
I will. Thank you.
All right. All right, anybody? All right.